My name is Rajesh Shrivastava. Today, we have gathered here to hear from our congressional candidate for District Seventeen, Ritesh Tandon. The reason why I got involved with this, I didn't know Ritesh before. I came across Ritesh in this whole process of, you know, getting more politically involved. I have been facing a different kind of problem living in California. Been here for thirty years and never seen something like this. There is a fear of unknown. The kind of riots we have seen recently have really shattered me. And that's one of the reasons why I've started outreach into or become more politically active. I have a fear of unknown and we all want to change politics for all of us, for ourselves, for our children, for our grandchildren. And that's why I want to vote for Ritesh. I'm a registered Democrat, but I'm going to be voting Republican this time. So having started that, I know that a lot of you have several questions. Let's start with Ritesh here. Ritesh, welcome to the show. And tell us about yourself. I know you are, you know, like any other Silicon Valley person. How did you get involved in politics?
Thank you so much, Rajeshi, and Namaskar everyone. And thank you so much for taking time off from your work to look into my town hall. First of all, my heartfelt condolence to all the families, those who lost their friends, families, members during COVID-19. I know it is a very tough time, which is further fueled by a devastating fire. And I wish everyone stays safe and healthy. Folks, this is Ritesh Tandon. I'm congressional candidate for District Seventeen, which includes Fremont, Newark, San Jose, Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, Milpitas, Aliso, and Cupertino. My grandfather, he was a freedom fighter and he taught me the value of freedom and liberty. Over two decades ago, I came to the Silicon Valley in the search of American dream. And I found it here, right in the Bay Area. I went to the Santa Clara University for MSNBA. And then last twenty-two years, I'm working for the companies. But the first thing what I started working here in the Bay Area is working for the nonprofit. I work for Shakrai Foundation as Exeter Committee Member and helped build ten eye hospital performing hundred and fifty thousand surgeries everywhere. Same way, for last seven years, I was president of Okma, which is the Pradesh Mandala of America. And we built ten daycare centers for the underserved children. Here in the Bay Area, I was fighting for the rights of Latino people, Latino children. And those are very close to my heart. And I can tell you, I'm not a politician. I just get into the things because things, what Rajeshi described, has started going very far left. Helping our community is my greatest joy and that is why I'm running to serve my fellow congressional District Seventeen. Last twenty-two years, I'm living in the Bay Area with my mother, my wife, and my children.
So, Ritesh, very interestingly, you talked about the American dream. And we all came in for that American dream. Somehow, I see few things happening which kind of go ahead and break that American dream for me and my children. I've been hearing about this racial discrimination Prop Sixteen, which is supported by our current Congressman Rohan. What do you have to say about?
So first thing I want to tell you, like Prop Sixteen, I don't know if you have heard about it or not, but I'll describe it very, very clearly here. Prop Sixteen bill that is recently passed by the California Senate and is going to be in your November ballot. Prop Sixteen, if it passes, is going to remove Prop Two-Nine. And what the Prop Two-Nine says? Prop Two-Nine says that the state shall not discriminate against or grant any preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in the operation of public employment, public education, or public contracting. That means everything need to be based on merit. But what Prop Sixteen is doing that and which is endorsed by my opponent Rohan, when he pledged that he would not sign such bills, but just for the benefit, he's going completely left. Prop Sixteen allows race-based discrimination for admission in California, UC and state colleges, and public contract. Now the people will be measured with the color of their skin instead of marriage. This is highly unfair bill, I can say, that will make California as a socialist state. When I came here in this country, I worked hard to get into the UC and the state colleges and I earned my degree. Today, that dream is completely shattered because the way things are going so left. If the Prop Sixteen bill is passed, it will punish the hardworking American children. Because now the white Americans, Asian Americans, as well as the other children, they will not work hard. They know that the color of their skin is important to get into the colleges. Now Prop Sixteen bill is also going to punish the hardworking parents. Because those parents whose children cannot get into the college because of the Prop Sixteen, they had to send their children either to the private schools or private colleges or outside California. In both cases, they will endosmaning two hundred to three hundred K extra. Truth is that, that today in UC and state colleges, without even Prop Sixteen, many other factors are considered. For example, individual applicant's personal story, the family income, how many students are coming from the same school or colleges. So in fact, the result without Prop Sixteen is amazing today. When my opponent says that Prop Sixteen is meant for African-American, today we have close to five and a half percent population of American, African, right here in my district. And today, African-American are five percent in UC and state colleges. Latinos are thirty-six percent in the UC and state colleges without Prop Sixteen. And actually, without Prop Sixteen, the Latinos number was earlier thirteen point four percent only. Asian-Americans are thirty-five percent today without Prop Sixteen. And everyone is doing well and everything is going in the right direction. But by bringing the race-based discrimination, what we are doing is we are putting the seat of discrimination with our children from the grade eleven onwards. That will not help anyone. When we look into, when we look into our Silicon Valley, we need children who are prepared for the college. We need children who should go and make difference in America. I have not seen the politicians making difference in K to twelve education system. Instead of that, by bringing the race-based discrimination, which promotes certain children of certain race to get into the UC even if they are not qualified, is completely unconstitutional. In fact, what we need to do is we need to reform the K to twelve education system. We need to give more choices to parent. We need to increase the use of technology and latest technologies in our schools and colleges. Also, we need to prepare our children for the better college preparedness course. Because where I see is a great mess because our teachers, they need to take much more responsibility in doing that. Also, Prop Sixteen bill is going to affect all the African-American children. Because today, sorry, African-American people, because today, the African-Americans are forty-five thousand more in the public job. And as per Prop Sixteen, only six percent or five and a half percent of African-American can be on the public job. This is not fair. Let the people work based on merit and let's live the American dream what Rajeshi has described. And let's not divert from that. Let people work hard, let them earn their degree. We don't want jobs, we don't want education based on the race. Folks, I'm not against affirmative action, but I want to tell you that affirmative action need to be race-blind. Because there are poor children in every races and every race deserve a chance. Not that one race can go ahead because of the Prop Sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Riteshji. So what I understood from this is it's a double-edged sword. Number one, it is going to be impacting the merit-based admissions in UC, UC system. Secondly, what you pointed out, it's also going to impact the African-Americans who are already in job because that reduction will happen. So it's going to hit us in two ways, you know, from the children's side and from the job side. So it's definitely, I definitely, you know, I appraise you for not supporting it, opposing it. So coming back to our topic here, we live in Silicon Valley. Very innovative place, a lot of startup environment, both technology, biotechnology. But lately, we have started seeing that a lot of companies are moving away because the costs are going down. Past operations are out. Lot of companies are moving away to, you know, cheaper destinations, Austin, Raleigh, Boston, it started with Boston, and maybe, you know, in some cases outside the United States. What are you going to do to keep the jobs here, to keep the same environment? And how would you incentivize startups to remain here?
Thank you so much, Rajeshi. First of all, twenty-two years I have worked in the Silicon Valley and I have seen that how Silicon Valley has grown. All the Silicon Valley home is full of innovative ideas and it is a global center for all the VCs. But very sad to see that today, because of high government regulation, high taxes, government interventions, high cost of living, companies are moving out of California. We need to stop that. In fact, we have a great plan to take the Silicon Valley to the next innovation. With the close cooperation from the government, local universities, as well as the investors, I like to build the next chapter of the Silicon Valley, which will be, which may be the bio-Silicon Valley. In fact, the next generation technologies also, what we think of, which will take the Silicon Valley to the next level, is artificial intelligence, quantum computing, advanced manufacturing, robotics, advanced medicine. In fact, after COVID-19, things have changed. And we have to keep our valley innovative and we have to stop the companies from leaving California. These are all innovative companies who are employing thousands of our community, our people, and giving businesses to thousands of small and medium businesses and everyone is living very nicely here. What we need to do is to keep this valley innovative is keep the low taxes. We need to keep reasonable regulation, not very high regulation. We need to bring lot more federal programs for startup companies. Because this is where I see it is missing. Some of the startup, which are not going to make money, but is good for the human being. We need to invest on those startups and less the benefit bring to the human being. Also, we need to encourage the domestic manufacturing with the special incentives of five to ten year tax and holidays. Because Silicon Valley today, they need progress-oriented policies, not progressive. I can tell you, the housing, traffic congestion, quality education, these are the key things and all these factors are missing today. People spend hours and hours on the road. Thanks to COVID, people got some break, but hours and hours on the road, instead of that, they can spend their time with the families. In fact, we need to attract the best mind across the United States and the world to come to the Silicon Valley and live. So Rajeshi, I have strong desire to see the Silicon Valley at the center of the next generation. Additionally, I want to propose foreign for the Silicon Valley. I like to bring the federal dollars to build the local infrastructure. Because I see the condition of our road is worsening every day. You look on the sides, look on the corners. It's very sad to see that we are in the Silicon Valley, where we are paying the highest taxes across the United States on the high-end side and we have the worst structure. Also, I like to bring the federally support, lower interest rate, smart city concept. And what this smart city is, like, this is a long-term vision, where we can work, live, have schools, shopping centers, cinema halls, everything within the three-mile distance. So what will happen? That we will involve the corporation into this and in this long-term vision, either outskirts of the Silicon Valley or at some distance, we can build the small smart cities where we can have everything right there within the three-mile distance. I also strongly support bringing the manufacturing back to the United States. Because I can tell you, time has come. Having the manufacturing right here in the US, as well as the areas which is limit one or two hour distance from the Silicon Valley. Our children who are here, they can be involved in the training. Companies and schools, they will know what is the next thing, what is required. Companies can hire third-year or fourth-year students as an intern and can train them. So that way, the students can get some benefit of the tuition loan, which they can pay off with the intern's money. Whereas for the parents, they can get some relief. And by the time the student is ready to go out for the job, they are fully prepared and they have the full hand on the new international technology. Similarly, I like to work with the school and colleges. Because today, when I look into the school books, there are all ten-year outdated books. This is what we need to stop. We need to bring the latest technologies to schools, latest technologies to colleges. We need to have the better interaction between the colleges and schools so that they work on national technologies. Today, our colleges are behind. I know that when I was doing my masters in company engineering, at that time, the wireless was picking up. But hardly there was any teacher who was teaching us because everyone was hired by the universities or the high-paying Silicon Valley. This is where we need to bring the changes to the life of the people, life of the children, and help them to grow from the day one. My opponent, he want to move the job outside the Silicon Valley. He is very busy serving the campaign co-chair of the Bonnie Sanders. Nothing he has thought innovative way to help the Silicon Valley and to help the community who are living here and suffering. Folks, the time has come to think out of the box and help, work together, help me. And we want to bring changes in the life of yours, your children, everyone in the Bay Area of District Seventeen. Thank you.
So, Riteshji, I heard your, what you have to say, some very good points here. So if I were to very quickly summarize and take away three points from this, I think the first thing you said that you're going to have certain incentives for startups. The second thing you wanted was to bring back the industry and, you know, and also have a corporate and community partnership so that, you know, people could be trained, manpower could be trained. And the third thing you emphasized on was infrastructure building. So having talked on that, on those lines, could we now address something which is actually impacting all of us today, COVID-19? This is such a damn thing. I mean, you open up the economy, you attend, you don't open up the economy, you attend. So it's kind of, you know, you are in a hardened rock, you know, such a hard place and you're stuck within the rocks, you know, which way do you go? What do you think about COVID-19? How would you handle the economy in that scenario?
Thank you so much, Rajeshi. I can tell you, COVID-19 pandemic, it will be remembered as a cruel event in the human history, which has killed half a million people already. And there is a confusing directive from WHO and CDC and did not help a lot. In fact, year 2020, we'll see that forty percent shrink in the US GDP and over thirty billion people already unemployed. CARE Act, it has helped to certain level. But then again, it is not a permanent solution. We need to bring people back to the jobs. We need to bring people back to their regular life. For this, I have three-step program. More details you can find on my website. First is a drugs and vaccine discovery program. I want to expedite that. I want to ensure that every healthcare workers, our firefighters, police, everyone, they get vaccine ASAP and especially by end of 2020. And by the year of 2021, everyone should be normal with the vaccine. Second, we need to have the common sense reopening guidance. We should not say that everything is shut down. We must follow the same policy of reopening. The older people and people with the underlying conditions, let's say for the high blood pressure, heart problems, obesity, and the weak immune systems, they should stay at home as much as possible or work from home. But the younger people and healthy people, they can start their work by making some, by using the responsible social distancing measure, wearing a mask in the public and washing their hands frequently. Also, I believe in extensive testing at the workplace where the people, they are working very close to each other. Also, how we have opened up the grocery places and other places with the some restriction, we should also open up places of worship like churches, temples, gurdwaras, synagogue, mosque. People are suffering today and they need, and they need some blessing. And with some special provision and guidelines, we can do that. So Rajeshi, in short, with the common sense solution, till we have the vaccine and with the precaution, we should continue to go ahead with the journey. We should stop all these riots and everything what is happening across the United States. Because this is doing nothing but spreading the virus. I'm very sad to see that how the Democrats and other people, they are so quiet when this thing is happening. I think time has come, we should all stand up and we should all take responsibility. And we should take and continue to work responsibly and we should use the mask when we go out and measure the social distancing, thank you.
Thank you, Riteshji. Yes, it is very important. I mean, one of the things which I also see and feel very strongly against is, yes, you have every right to protest, life is important, black lives do matter. But then it should not end up in rioting, business losses, life, losses to life, losses, damages to businesses, property, police, multiple other things. I mean, that's not what it is. If people want to really organize, it should be a pretty quiet, honest kind of protest. And everybody appreciates that, you know, everybody, you know, they have a right to voice. At this point, I would like to tell everybody that you can always email ritesh@ritashatandonforcongress.com. If you have any ideas or any questions for him, he'll be very happy to answer back to you. So having talked about COVID, I think, you know, your approach is pretty, pretty nice. It's kind of conforming to both things. I mean, there is, as we say, there is no perfect right or wrong way to handle this. But yes, there has to be a way in which a human way, you know, human beings can continue forward and our economy can move forward. Talking about the rights and everything else, there's another problem which has been bothering and especially the Asian community, Indians and Chinese for a long time. In the last decade or so, is the immigration reforms. We have a lot of people stuck in terms of the green card processing and times are, you know, it's just mind-boggling to hear those times, people have to wait. Families are split many times because of that. There is an artificially inflicted pain on the families because of the separation. So what do you have to, what do you have to say about?
Thank you, Rajeshi. One thing I want to tell you, that I came here on F1, then passes through H1 green card citizenship, took me more than fifteen years. No doubt, I enjoyed this journey, very thankful to this country who has given me so much opportunity. At the same time, I see that my colleagues and many of my friends, they are suffering. In fact, if we look into last twenty years, no one has done anything for them. My opponent, even though he got lot of support from the community, from the people, but they are completely ignored. Today, six hundred thousand families, I know for Indian, Chinese, everyone, they are waiting for the green card. And some of them, they are waiting for twenty-plus years. These are the people who pay the taxes, contribute to the economy, help America innovate and follow the rules. But nothing has been done. In fact, from the day one, the policies are created in such a way that when H1 come in this country, they need to be treated in certain way. But, but that did not happen. Today, I see Joe Biden and others, even my opponent, he is talking about eleven million undocumented so that they can vote for them. They want to, they want to make eleven million undocumented people as this region. But this is highly unfair for the other side. We need to look from all the angles and we need to help everyone. Key part of immigration policy is, we need to keep American workers on the top priority and they must not be affected by any immigration policy. When we look into past fifty years, America has been hit with double whammy squad. First, by the outsourcing of manufacturing job. And second, by the five-four yearly increase of the legal immigration, which is now one million per year now. At the same time, approximately one million undocumented immigrants, they also migrated to the United States. So looking into all those things, it has put big dent on the infrastructure of the United States. I support the immigration of skilled workers that can contribute heavily to the success of American society. All skilled workers need to be measured in the same funnel versus the country quota limitation what we have today and which I believe is highly unfair. We need stick rules which will prohibit or which will stop the American companies from replacing the skilled US citizens with the lower foreign cost workers. We need to help our darker children, those who came here and there is no fault of theirs. We need to give them their life, we need to give them one more chance. We must also protect our less skilled worker who are already American citizens. And they are impacted today because of, of the low-cost shop which is taken by others. These workers are nothing, but they, many of them, they work for small businesses like restaurant, construction, farms, and many other professions. Country, our country cannot have a porous border. Because when we look into our corporate, they exploit and even promote sometimes the porous borders so that they can hire the cheap labor and get their work done. Today, progressive Democrats, they have openly engaged the undocumented immigration and constantly introduce a bill like New Way Forward Act, which is H35383, which prevents deportation of undocumented criminals. This bill is co-sponsored by my opponent Rohan. Today, progressive Democrats like Rohan, they seem to be working with the wealthy individual interests who contribute to his campaign. I think the time has come, we should all start thinking about America, American people and give them the good wages, give them the training and give them the healthy job. And I pledge and I promise that I'll follow all the principles of good economics to create the good immigration law. Because I went through this thing, I know how it works. My opponent was born here, he don't understand the pain of immigration. Neither he don't understand what the companies are doing today. They don't understand how the American people suffer. And I promise that I will take care from all the three angles with my experience. Thank you.
So what do you think, Riteshji? Why would people like Rohan and others would help out in legalize the immigration of some of the, you know, the bad people or the criminals?
The problem is, there are eleven to twelve million undocumented, yeah. So in fact, the criminal part, I'm still, the bill what I said is H35383 bill. You should look into it, that is called as No New Way Forward Act. It is co-sponsored by Rohan. And in fact, this particular bill, it prevent the undocumented workers from deportation, even though they have done very serious crime like rape or even killing. I don't understand the concept. I don't understand the concept, Rajeshi, sorry, I don't have this answer. But one thing I can tell you, time has come to start looking into America and American people.
It is the vested interest which is driving this, which is very clear. So coming to my next question, and this is again, intermingled. intermingled into the questions I have already asked, we have already talked about the insecurity of the American dream. We are already talking about the insecurity of immigration and insecurities arising out of illegal immigration or and legalization of illegal immigrants. How does it impact my individual, individual security, social security going forward?
So Rajeshi, regarding the individual security, let me tell you first of all, I'm very sad to see that what is happening in Minnesota, Portland, Karmusha and other democratic controlled cities. No doubt, I am with the families of Mr. Jacob and Mr. Floyd. It should not be happening. At the same time, riots, looting, burning buildings, harming innocent people is not acceptable. I can tell you, everything can be achieved with the talks. Burning and looting is not a solution. My opponent Rohana, he want to defend police, he want to defend the border patrol, he like to have the open border. In fact, this is not a solution. In fact, our police, they are working very hard, they are putting their life for our safety, for safety of our neighborhood. No doubt, there are incidents which happen everywhere, but that doesn't mean that we punish the police of entire country. We need to work with the police. What I believe and what I want to do is, I don't believe in defending police. I believe in better police training and closer interaction with the community for safer neighborhood. I support reforming the police procedure because what is happening today is there is some disconnect, that's what I see. And the police require better sensitivity training. They need not to use the arm when the person is unarmed and is not harming them. I can tell you one thing, that I will invest more in police, I will give them more training. I'll make them more stronger. At the same time, they should have, they should not use any arms when the person is unarmed and they should only have conversation. I support the border security and the strong military for our country because things are going way far left. So Rajeshi, I'll stop here because I can continue very long on that topic of security, yeah. But time has come, we have to save our neighborhood, we have to save our people. We have to make sure that all the people who are doing the looting, riotings, riots and everything, we need to stop that and we need to stop that right now and immediately. Innocent people should not be harmed and should not be killed for, for the name, for the namesake, which is not true and right, yeah.
Definitely, any reasonably thinking, a human being should be aligned with your thoughts at this point. And the way it has been dealt within Bay Area is something I find it very surprising. You know, highly educated people, but then when we go to vote, we vote like illiterate, totally, total political illiterates up there. Coming on those lines, also, I would like to mention guys, all the people listening to us. You know, if you are, if you like what he has to offer, Ritesh has to offer, please to go and help him out and raise, you know, fundraising at tandonforcongress.com, you can go and make your donation there. Also, any ideas you have, you can send an email to ritesh@tandonforcongress.com. So coming back from security and insecurity scenario, let's talk about the healthcare. That's another big issue which we have.
So Rajeshi, first of all, I believe that every human being need a healthcare irrespective of financial situation. And we need to achieve same with the right policies, not just by statement. Today, when we look into my opponent Rohana, he's talking about Medicare for all. Earlier, Barney Sanders was talking about it for the long time. This is nothing, this is just political hoax. Even the Democrats who understand this little better, they have not taken Medicare for all in their platform. And that's the reason why Rohana today is not supporting the democratic platform. Let me tell you, let me tell you what, what the Medicare for all cost is. The cost of the Medicare for all is around three trillion dollars. Today, when we look into the drug industry, they make the profit of only sixty to seventy billion per year. When we look into the health insurance companies, they make the profit of twenty to thirty billion dollar per year. Now, if the government take the control and make it one pair medical system, most of the saving is hundred billion dollar for, for, for the program, which is not up to the mark. We know that the, how the government runs social security is and we know that soon we will be going to run out. Same thing will happen with the government run program. Now, hundred billion saving, let's say, what you can get with the, with the insurance companies and death companies. You can add another six hundred billion dollars what you pay for health insurance premium. That brings us to seven hundred billion dollars, but still we are not even close to three trillion dollars. Then when my opponent, he says that they are going to tax our rich people. Now, when we look into the rich people, they make one trillion dollar per year. Now, one trillion dollar, even if you tax hundred percent to all these tax people, you are still at one point seven trillion dollars. You are still not close to three trillion. So technically, the number doesn't make sense. And again, the quality of healthcare owned by the government will be way too down. We'll have the lousy government operated medical system with no motivation for doctors to hard work. Companies will not innovate because they know that it is now controlled by the government. And the research investment and everything will dry up. So folks, Medicare for all is just political agenda. We need to give healthcare to everyone, but we have to give it with policies. We see the long wait time in UK who have the Medicare for all kind of system. And I know my one of the close friend, he passed away because he never got his turn. He need to wait for eight months, nine months for his heart surgery, which doctors think that is not important and other people are important at that time. So, one of the key parties, we cannot compare UK and US, as US, many people are in welfare versus working. Those people who are in the welfare in the United States, they don't pay the taxes. Do you know that the white Democrats were rejecting cut in the payroll taxes? Why? Because cut in the payroll taxes, the people will get the benefit, those who are working. And the majority of Democrats, those who are supporting the socialist program, they don't pay that much taxes. So we need to reject the ideas like Medicare for all, that will reduce the quality of healthcare as well as increase the taxes on the common people. In fact, Congress must work on the policies that reduce the healthcare costs and increase the supply of medicine and the health services. I believe that the competition and the same regulation will bring the cost of the medical down. I like to create more competition, which will increase the quality of care. At the same time, we work to provide healthcare to every individual at affordable prices. Those who cannot afford medical at all, there need to be some exceptions so that we can provide the coverage. But in Congress, my key focus will be allow the same company drug imports with the minimal FDA issue. Because today, the drug companies are selling cheaper in Canada, but they are selling higher price in the United States, it's not fair. We need price transparency from the Medicare hospitals, insurance companies so that common person like you and me can pick who is providing the right solution to us and what cost. I like to give more incentives for smaller clinic so that any pain or any emergency happen, we just don't run to the emergency care where they bill ten to fifteen thousand dollars for just one visit. Instead of that, I like to have a smaller clinic which can take care of the patients instead of running to the emergency. I like to reexamine the drug prices because there are intermediaries and regulation which increase the cost of drug by almost twenty times. This is what the CEO of the drug company told me. I like to reduce the length of college requirement for medical school. Because today, if we don't produce enough doctors and nurses, our requirement is way too high. The way we should work is, how it is done in other countries, is twelve plus four plus two years, twelve years. And after twelve, people can go to the medical and of four years of medicals and then two years of residency and two years of N D and then residency. It completely depend on the people. Today is very long process and, and it's not fair for the children. I like to increase the more insurance plan so that those who are healthy, they need not to buy the expensive plan from the employer. I like to protect our veterans and provide them the world-class healthcare and services because they have worked for our country. And I met with a veteran couple of weeks back and I'm very sad to see that they suffer with so much paperwork they have to do. It need to be simple, one-stop shop for them to get the insurance and healthcare without asking any questions. And I'm very sad when I talk with the person. I like to protect the social security and Medicare and cover all the pre-exacing condition. Our Americans, they have worked hard, they have paid to the social security. Now, it is your responsibility and our responsibility to take care of them. So under no condition, they should suffer. It is a time that we should fix our system. Also, I like to remove unnecessary overhead and regulations from hospitals and doctors. I can tell you, when I was talking with the doctor, doctor told me that before even I touch the patient, I need to do ten tests. Because point zero zero one percent, if something happened to the patient, their insurance will not cover him because he did not take the ten different tests. This is highly unfair. So now you are doing so many unnecessary process because the regulation and requirement asks you. I think this is unfair and we can save lot more cost. And, and, and we can bring down the medical system cost drastically so that every individual and every person can afford that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ritesh. I wish we were living in different times. So many issues. So coming, you know, after the insecurity, healthcare, immigration, I wish, you know, there was a better thing I could ask you, but let me ask you about the ever increasing or whatever deteriorating US housing problem or the housing problems in Silicon Valley. What are your thoughts on that?
First of all, I can tell you that when we look into our, our Silicon Valley housing, the average median cost is one point two million today. I was talking with the, because in my, in my team, I have the folks on the real estate as well. Despite the low interest today, I can tell you that minimum you need to make two hundred K to afford this median house. Unfortunately, in the Bay Area, the income is around one hundred and thirty K, that's the average median income. And this is creating the affordability gap. So income, interest rates, supply and demand all play in the affordability of the homes. Interest rate fortunately are quite low now, but even though only one in the three person in the Bay Area can own the house. Because when we look into the last decade, eight hundred thousand jobs were created in the Bay Area. But only sixty thousand new houses become available. That resulted in the high prices and the high rental. Today's cities, they need to revisit and they need to think a solution in a way that will, that will help them. Our long-term plan, we certainly believe in the, in the cities like smart cities where we work with the corporation, where we can live, schools are nearby, companies are nearby, transportations are very well connected. Smart city planning, which is a long-term vision of ours, we can certainly reduce the impact on the, in the long term as well as on our children. But in order to create a better affordability and quality life, I will also like to work with the cities and corporation to give more incentives on the large plant development where living, enjoyment, education and work can be within the, within the walking distance. Also, I like to improve the regulations, so much, so many paperwork, permit cost. In fact, I like to myself add the granny unit in my house. I can tell you, I gave up. I started it and I say, I'm not going to go through. There need to be incentives where people can add the granny unit and allow the parents to live with you, with them or allow that to unit segment to be rented out so that will bring the less train on the housing market. All these things, cities need to be helping, but it is not there now. So in fact, I can tell you, overall, to give more, to give the less train, I like to improve the quality of life of the people. I like to connect our transportation system, it need to be well coordinated. Today, we have train, bus, buses and different system, but nobody talk with each other. Their schedules are very off. I want them to have the well-connected schedule so that the people who are living in San Jose or other part, they can reach to the world with the very, very short time. And today, if it is not there. So Rajeshi, I think on the housing side, we have lot more work to do. And, and this is not the, this is not the easy fix, considering the fact when we have, we are in the top, top five cities of homelessness are right here in the Bay Area. And our people, they are not able to do anything and whatever their money, whatever money they are pouring in, in short, the homelessness continue to rise, nothing is changing. So lot more work to do, Rajeshi. Maybe I'll do one special session on this area, on the housing part and go on more details.
So, yeah, I mean, times are tough. We had a great discussion today. And one of the things I would like to emphasize and let everybody else on the program listening to us understand that whatever we talked about is for ourselves, our children, our community, where we live. All these issues are important for you, me and any other third party. So the coming election, independent of your presidential choice, I think we have to make these changes here in the area. And when we go out to vote, we have to go out and vote with that thinking in mind. With that, Ritesh, should, should we open up for questions now?
Actually, I have, I would like to say a few things is, thank you so much, those who have listened to me. My campaign is working at very ground level. And I can tell you that I have raised less than hundred K versus my opponent who has raised three point two million dollars from the rich people and special interest group. I will not be able to show you expensive ads in the news media, nor I'll be reaching out to everyone to buy your vote. I can only tell you that if I'm elected, I can work for you and only you. I have no interest to grow or to impress the Washington DC. I have interest that I can help you to live better life. I can help your children to live a better life. And I can only promise you that Bay Area will be my only focus. And I will be your candidate. You have given four years to my opponent and he has done nothing for you. I'm just asking you to give me just two years. My website is www.tandonforcongress.com. For, for questions in these sessions, what I'm going to do is, you can email me, which is ritesh@tandonforcongress.com, which is ritesh@tandonforcongress.com. I'm going to have another sessions because every week I'm planning to do one or two town hall meetings. And I will take your question and address that. And one thing I can tell you and assure you, And one thing I can tell you and assure you that twenty-two years of my nonprofit background and twenty-two years of my technology skills and negotiation skills, I can do many things at a very low price and low cost. And this is where we need today. Today, our California budget deficit is fifty-five billion dollar. Everyone is spending your money left and right, but I can bring lot of, lot of control into that and also provide at the same time much, much more services. With that, I like to thank you so much. Please type in the questions on the chat window on the Facebook and please also email me. And I also want to thank Rajeshji for, for becoming my host, for helping me and, and running through, through the path. Rajeshji, you have any last thing to say to the audience?
No, I would like to thank you for, for giving us this opportunity to understand what you stand for. I would also like to tell people to go out and, you know, funding, fund Ritesh as well as go and look at who's funding Rohana. Because this is public information, if you Google Congressman Rohana funding, you'll be able to see. And I did it myself, I was really surprised from, he's getting money from all over the country. He's supposed to be my congressman, not somebody living in Vermont or New York City. So that's my real problem. I want my own congressman to actually clean up the place to solve my problems and somebody I could go to. With that, I thank everybody and thank you, Riteshji, and thank you all. Have a nice day.
Yeah, thank you so much, Rajeshi. The next down hall will be coming Monday, twelve thirty PM, yeah, please log in once again. And all your questions, what I've received, I will answer that and I will also repeat some of the content for the people those who will make it. Thank you.
Thank you.